Ladies and gentlemen, let's stand for a moment in prayer, please. Our kind and gracious heavenly Father, you've granted us, Lord, with the land that we're able to govern ourselves, dear God. We know that the democracy is not the best form of government, but it's the best form of government at this time that we live in. Be with us, guide us, and direct us. We pray that you'll be safe during these storm events that we're having up, and be with the families. We hope and pray, Lord, that you'll get us through these times, and hopefully we can prepare for the future that is coming down the path. In your heavenly, sweet name, we pray. Amen. All right, we pledge allegiance while we're up. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. All right, that brings us down to item three, amendments to the agenda. We have one amendment to the agenda. We have to number, uh, the one amendment we have is to add a board appointee, uh, board appointment to the action items under item K. Uh, I need approval, uh, to amend the agenda to that point. Have a move in a second to approve the agenda, uh, amendment to the agenda. Any further discussion? None being all in favor of nobody saying aye? None opposed? Thank you. All right, then we get down to item four, which is approval of the agenda. I need a move in a second to approve the agenda. That is before you. Have a move in a second. Any further comments? None being all in favor of nobody saying aye? None opposed? Thank you. Now, item five is employee recognition. This is a part of the, of the meeting that Ms. Denny operates, and I think it's very, very good she's doing this for the employees of Pickens County. So if this come on, we'll turn it over to Ms. Denny.
Thank you. Good evening. We have some wonderful long-term employees, and it's my privilege to get to honor them. We have three tonight. Zachary Crowe is not with us. His award is for 10 years, start date 1/5/2006. Misty Johnson, 10 years again, January 23 of '06. Jason Tanner.
And Jason, why are you up? They won't, they won't get pictures. Everybody's scattering.
How long has Jason been with us?
Ten years.
Ten years.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Jason with Road Department. Road Department. All right. And I gotta give y'all thanks for, you know, everything that y'all have done for me. Well, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Bart. Bart. Michelle, it works for us. Turn it up.
That's his problem.
Yeah. Faye, are you ready? All right, this brings us down to item number six, under the financial report for the month, and I'm gonna turn it over to Ms. Faye Harvey. I just keep on it long.
Okay, thank you. The financial report that y'all have is for the full year, it's for the period of December 31st, 2015. The revenue expenditure budget should be at 100%. The, um, the total general fund revenue collections for that period are, were $21,738,493, and that's 95.61%. And it goes to the expenditures for general government. The total general government expenditures are $3,182,968. That's 88.5% of the budget amount. For the judicial, um, the expenditures are $2,849.97. That's 94.36%. For public safety, um, total, sorry. Total public safety expenditures were $10,495.06, and that's 95.69%. The, um, total public work expenditures are $2,779.12. That's 95.63%. The health department, senior center, and the MATS program expenditures are at $704,242.88. Culture and recreation is $864,0969, and that's 98.02%. Housing and development is at $521,020, and that's 92.16%. The total expenditures for the general fund budgets is $21,391,813, and that's 94.12%. Slightly, it's slightly under budget, or almost 6% under budget. For the enterprise funds, the water department expenditures are $2,101,870. That's at 100.47, slightly over budget. The airport is at $301,879.98, and that's at 80% of their expenditure budget. There will be amounts that will be accrued back, both revenue and expenditures, and, um, I will wait probably until the first of March or so before we do all that, when we're preparing for the audit. Everything should be posted, and I'll do the final, um, report at that time. And some of the budgets may need, um, amendments, but we can discuss that then. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Faye. Any, any other questions? Are you saying what we got you here between you and Kim? Kim, you got a, you got a roundabout total of what you spent on weather-related issues since January 1st?
We're still working on it. We still like two to three weeks on, on all the damage, so, um...
Well, with Tim, we had, had the spring floods here this winter.
Right.
So that, that hit us first, and then we've got the snow and ice that we're dealing with, and we'll be dealing with those weekend, so, uh, those will be coming. I bet we're showing under budget for next, for next month.
Yes, I believe that.
And we're hoping that with the governor's proclamation, if the president ever does one, then we might be able to receive some funds back on that. We're, we're still working on that part of it. Any other, any other comments, Faye?
I don't think so.
All right. Thank you very much. All right, that brings us into the consent agenda. Ms. Deborah, do we have anything on the consent agenda?
No, sir.
All right, that brings us down to old business in regards, I'm sorry. We are going, item number eight is old business, and at this time, um, Richard, you got anything you need to tell us anymore about the zoning maps? We went and get, taking care of this item that we've been dealing with for millennia?
Yes, sir. The official land use intensity map of Pickens County, Georgia, as specified in the Code of Ordinances, is proposed for your review and possible action. We have hard copy maps. We have smaller sections for y'all and any members of the public to look at tonight. I'll be glad to stay after the meeting or at any time in my office. Planning Commission on January 11th reviewed it and recommended its approval. The zoning for properties does not change, as I mentioned in the planning commission meeting, for private properties, and so this is essentially using what we have to have it officially codified as of January or at a later date if you choose to table it tonight.
Well, I've got a resolution here re-adopting chapter 67 dash 6.1 of the Code of Ordinances of Pickens County, which you have prepared for the, for the commissioners to go ahead and get this thing finalized, be it ordained by the commissioner of Pickens County. Commissioners of Pickens County as follows. Number one, that official land use intensity map of Pickens County, Georgia, as established in the Code of Ordinances of Pickens County, Georgia, chapter 67 dash 6.1 is hereby re-adopted. So this date, if we want to so, go ahead and approve for this resolution. May I get a move in a second to go ahead and approve for this resolution? Or would y'all like to table? Sure, move. Have a move in a second to approve. Any further discussion? None being all in favor of nobody saying aye? None opposed? Richard, thank you very much for the work you have done on this, for the short time that you've been here so far to get this thing finally finalized, and we can now proceed on, I'll give it to Ms. Deborah. All right, any, any other thing under old business, Ms. Deborah?
No, sir.
All right. That brings us down into new business, item number nine. Do we have anything in new business? Okay. So be it. Then that brings us down to item 10 under action items. Number subsection A of approved minutes. Number one, the regular board meeting of December 17th, 2015. Need a move in a second to approve those minutes for that particular meeting. Sure, move. Move in a second. Any further discussion? None being all in favor of nobody saying aye? None opposed? Thank you. That brings us down to number two, item under the work session on January 7th, 2016. I need a move in a second to approve those minutes. Sure, move. Have a move in a second to approve. Any further discussion? None being all in favor of nobody saying aye? None opposed? Thank you. All right, whatever that. Then we go under item B, under the rezon request. We have a conditional use request to allow a special events venue of Doug Linditatum on 620 Camp Creek Station Road in Jasper, parcel number 046C dash 001 of 75 acres. The, uh, we can still have, between us three, have them have a little further conversation if we need to. If I want to bring this out, I make a motion to approve the conditional use recommending by the planning commission with the following caveat. Based on my conversation with the county attorney, I would delete the four conditions that the planning commission has recommended. However, because of these issues raised before the planning commission in its hearing regarding the noise levels and time of day of those noise levels, and because this property is abutting a residential land use intensity district, I would have, I would have made a motion, B, for the approval of an additional use request for the purpose of holding weddings, special events, and similar outdoor meetings of the public on the Tatum property. However, said public event shall not be permitted to continue after 11:00 PM. I believe this to be a reasonable method to control this activity with regards to its location and relation to the neighborhood. So I'm gonna make, I'm gonna make a move that this is what we go ahead and get this item behind us. Agree? I move have a second. So you second it, Jerry?
Yeah.
Have a move in a second. Any further discussion? None being all in favor of nobody saying aye? None opposed? Thank you. That has been approved to that point. All right, that brings us down to item number two, under the rezon. Let me get through this right here. RZ 1215 1189 to Timothy Butler, Jacqueline C. Payne, 11024 Highway 53 West, a Cocking Rock highway business to rural residential. 034-080 and 034-080-001, at 3.257 acres. Hold on one second. We have got, Deborah, I do not have that one. Oh, Pickens County. Pickens County Planning and Development Office received a completed application on December 8th, 2015, from Timothy Butler, requesting a change in the land, in the change in the land use classification of highway business to suburban residential on 3.257 acres located at 11024 Highway 53 West, Cocking Rock, Georgia. The intended purpose of this rezon request, if approved, is to utilize the property for residential use for its private residence or possible to sell. This property consisting of two adjacent lots totaling 3.257 acres is located at 11024 Highway 53 West, Cocking Rock, Georgia. The properties have road frontage on State Route 53 and on Big Ridge Road. The public hearing was held on the 11th of January 2016 regarding this application in the Pickens County Commissioners Meeting Room before the Pickens County Planning Commission. After reviewing the application, receiving the staff report to be approved, and listening to the testimony from the applicant with no public comments, the Pickens County Planning Commission voted seven yes and zero no to approve the rezon request on the 3.25 acre partial contained on the tax map parcel, 034-080 and 034-080-001. I need a vote to approve. I make a move that we make, uh, have a vote to approve this.
Richard, did you hear the discrepancy? On the agenda, it's RR, and you read off suburban residential?
Sure is. Suburban residential classification of highway business X beacon suburban residential SR.
What does it have on your sheet from?
Uh, I don't see it on my, on my highway business sheet right now.
Rural residential?
Rural residential. Yeah, it's got rural residential on the agenda.
On the agenda. So what's on that?
Um, it is down as suburban residential on the, on the memo.
The application is for rural residential, so I apologize about the confusion.
So it's right on the agenda?
So it's right on the agenda. Can I, okay. All right, got that corrected. This suburban residential, 3.25. So I make a move to approve. Have a move in a second. Any further discussion? I'm sorry, you what?
Highway business is two rural residential.
Yeah. I need a move in a second to go from highway business to rural residential. Have a move in a second. Any further discussion? None being all in favor of nobody saying aye? None opposed? Thank you. This is the resolution, table Jack from suburban residential.
Then it's got change in the planning permission.
Now we get into the election, item C, the election of the board vice chair for 2016. All right, I'll, I'll tell you what I'll do. I'll make a move to nominate Becky for the next, for this coming year of 2016. May I get a second? Have a move in a second. Do we need any further discussion? None being all in favor of nobody saying aye? Aye. None opposed? Thank you. Congratulations, Becky.
Thank you.
All right. The next one is item D, to appoint a county attorney.
I'm gonna make a move that we keep the county attorney that we have now, um, so I'm gonna
make a move to that point. Have a move in a second. Any further discussion? All right, we have a move in a second. No further discussion, all in favor of nobody saying aye? None opposed? Thank you. All right, we have, uh, next one is we have to have an appointment of a county clerk. Um, I'm gonna make a move that we re-appoint Ms. Deborah Watson as the Pickens County clerk for the coming year of 2016. Have a move in a second. Any further, any further discussion? None being all in favor of nobody saying aye? None opposed? Thank you. Congratulations, Deborah. All right. Now we have, item F is making appointment for the deputy county clerk, and I'm gonna make a move that we appoint Ms. Paula Peace, who has been deputy clerk with the rest of them for quite a few years, to make a move that we accept Ms. Paula Peace as a deputy county clerk for Pickens County. Have a move in a second. Any further discussion? None being all in favor of nobody saying aye? None opposed? Thank you. All right. All right, now item G is the approval of our meeting times for the business work sessions and our regular county meetings. All right, we made this, uh, we made this announcement at the work session. We'll be glad to give this information to anyone that would like to have it. On the other hand, Ms. Mary Lipsy, and we have fetchnews.com, Ms. Pritchard back there in the back, we will share this with them, where they can post it on their website.
It also goes to Pickens Progress.
Yes, it also goes to Pickens Progress. So I need approval of the, uh, of the meeting places, dates, and times for 2016. We'll pass these. Y'all have any issues with any dates that might interfere? And what this boils down to is the work sessions are always on the first Thursday of every month at 10:00 AM here in this room, and the work, and the actual work sessions, such as what we're in today, will be on the third Thursday.
The regular meeting.
Yeah, the regular meeting, which is the third Thursday of every month in this room here. That's what we've got here. All right, need a move in a second to approve these meeting places, times, and dates for 2016. Have a move in a second. Any further discussion? None being all in favor of nobody saying aye? None opposed? Thank you. All right, item H, we have a contract for water monitoring at Long Swamp Creek, at Rebus Mountain Road, and Sharp Mountain Creek at Daddy Mill, and I'm gonna turn it over to Richard and explain what's going on, me and him though, but I don't know if you all have been completely informed, but I think we kinda went over to the last work session, so, Richard, if you would, please.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. In 2013, a watershed protection plan was approved for not only Pickens County, but several counties that were involved north of Atlanta, and EPD and the Army Corps of Engineer were involved. As part of that watershed protection plan, it includes implementation policies for two sites for water quality monitoring. They're actually right on the Pickens-Cherokee County line, just barely in Cherokee County, but as part of that agreement, there are two water sites. Moving forward, we've been in discussions with EPD about how much the, the county needs to pay for water quality monitoring. We want to work with EPD on trying to better understand what is actually required by EPD versus what is recommended, what is good, best management practices, environmental desires that they have of Pickens County, being that for stormwater management, unlike bigger counties, Pickens County is not an MS4 community, and Pickens County does not have a sewer system. Therefore, planning and development staff at this time has been working with our county water department to have discussions with EPD to have dialogue about maybe paring down just how much implementation we need to do, and saving the county ultimately some money, potentially at the end of the day. Last year, for example, Pickens, Pickens County spent over $14,000 on water monitoring just for one site. And so if EPD wants us to now have two or three or more water monitoring sites spread out across the county, then we wanna know exactly what our options are, if there are any alternatives, and so at this time, staff would recommend that y'all table this contract until such time that EPD in writing gives county staff a better statement of requirements, recommendations, what's actually, what we need to do.
All right. You've heard his request. I, I have to kinda go along with him, because we're still getting, getting some figures on that, and he hasn't sent some paperwork in regard to that. Table this item? Have a move in a second. Table. Any further discussion? None? Do I need to go on that? Yeah. Uh, move in a second. All in favor of nobody saying aye? None opposed? Yeah, we have tabled this item here. All right. Bring this down to item I, authorize the chairman to sign the mats, such as mountain area transit, the white buses, from 2016 to 2017 grant for transportation service. I need an authorization, uh, from the board here to, to sign that, that contract, that grant, I'm sorry. Move in a second. Any further discussion? None being all in favor of nobody saying aye? None opposed? Thank you. All right, bring this down to item J, under the appointment of a county legislative coordinator. Since Norman, Mr. Norman Pope has retired, uh, he was handing back to the position also with his other jobs that he had, um, I'm gonna make a recommendation. We have a resolution to appoint him a county legislative coordinator, and if I may, I know somebody's gonna ask some questions on what is that. Uh, so let me read this real quick. Whereas legislative decisions made by the Georgia General Assembly increasingly impact county governments, and whereas the Association of County Commissioners of Georgia, ACCG, monitors and reports on legislative proposals on a regular basis during and after each legislative session, and whereas ACCG regularly seeks input and comment from county officials and staff in assessing the impact of legislative proposals and the developing responses on such proposals, and whereas to ensure an effective and accurate response, there must be a process whereby reports from ACCG and requests from ACCG for information on analysis of legislation proposals are directed to the most appropriate county officials or staff for a response. Now therefore, be resolved to most effectively respond to legislative proposals affecting counties or shall be one county official or staff person designated by the Board of Commissioners to serve as the county legislative coordinator, the CLC for Pickens County. Be it further resolved that the CLC for Pickens County shall have the following. Number one, access to all department heads and county officials to obtain information and data. Number two, access to the commissioner. Number three, working knowledge of county operations. Number four, the ability and time to respond to requests for information from ACCG policy staff in a timely manner. Number five, the authority within the county government structure to request and receive timely responses to requests for information. Number six, knowledge of the various departments within the county and the points of contact within each to obtain information and feedback. And number seven, the ability to provide PROC reports to the commissioner and other county officials regarding the legislative reports and activities of ACCG. Be it further resolved that the Board of County Commissioners hereby designates Richard Osburn to serve at the CLC for Pickens County until further notice. Be it further resolved that this notice of this appointment be immediately transmitted to the Association of County Commissioners of Georgia. I need approval to go ahead and sign this and, and appoint Mr. Osburn as a CLC. Have a move in a second. Any further discussion? None being, all in favor of nobody saying aye? None opposed? Thank you. Congratulations, Rick. All right. Bring this down to item K, which is, uh, the amendment to the agenda we had earlier. A resolution appointing Shelley Cantrell to the Pickens County Board of Family and Children's Services. The... the term ending June 30 of 2019. And if I'm not mistaken, I believe this is the DFAX Board, isn't it, Dever?
It is the DFAX.
DFAX Board of Pickens County.
Sure.
Have a move in a second to appoint Ms. Shelley. Any further discussion? None being, all in favor, nobody saying aye?
Aye.
None opposed? Thank you. That has been approved.
We have the resolution there.
Whereas a position has become vacant on the Pickens County Board of Family and Children's Services due to the resignation of Ms. Ann Harz, now therefore be hereby resolved that Ms. Shelley Cantrell be and is hereby appointed to the Pickens County Board of Family and Children's Services to complete the term which ends June 30, 2019. All right. That brings us down to item number 11. Any comments from the guests? Yes, ma'am?
Question. You had the Planning Commission made a recommendation that the Tatum permit not be permitted to go beyond 10:30. Curious, was it just the three of you made the decision that it's 11 o'clock and not 10:30?
The three of us did make the decision, 11 o'clock, and the reason why, we wanted to adjoin that 11 o'clock with the residential side of the community where everything would be cutting off at 11 o'clock in that area.
I'm confused, I'm not clear what you're saying.
We were lining it up with Big Canoe and I talked to the general manager today, and he said, since they're zoned differently, that there's no set time. The terraces, for example, they're, they shut down by 10:30, and he said in the summertime there might be some events that go as late as 11:00, so we were trying to line up with them.
Except for it's published in the Big Canoe records that it's 10:30. It's either 10:00 or 10:30, so that's not the accurate, I'm just making that up. That's just from speaking with him today. Okay, well, he's wrong.
All right. Any further comments? None being, ladies and gentlemen, be careful this weekend, it's gonna be icy, we will have equipment on the roads working around the clock, so y'all be very careful, it is coming in. Thank you, y'all have a great weekend. This meeting is now adjourned.